We're the state of allegiance, I'm asking all the governor for allegiance and prayer afterwards.
My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you Alan, a rainy, wet, cold night. Thank you for coming, I appreciate y'all coming. First thing we have to do is have roll call by the clerk.
The town of the Dalian Board of Alderman Roll Call, a regular meeting of the mayor and Board of Alderman dated December 10th, 2019. Alderman Betts?
Present.
Alderman Betts, present. Alderman Doray?
Present.
Alderman Doray, present. Alderman Gardner?
Here.
Alderman Gardner, present. Alderman McCoy?
Present.
Alderman McCoy, present. Alderman Probst?
Here.
Alderman Probst, present. Mayor let's the record show a former board's present.
Okay, before we get into our agenda, first thing we need to do is approve our minutes from our previous meeting, under any questions?
I move that we approve as written.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Doray to hear a second. Second by Alderman McCoy, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number one on our agenda is a review of our financial statements for October, and I'm gonna go to our CPA, Ms. Deborah Mook. She's a little under the weather, so she might...
Okay. The financials for tonight's meeting include the balance sheet as of October 31st, 2019, and in summary, the town has 6 million in cash, 3.8 million in investments, total assets of 33.4 million, total liabilities of 5.8 million, and a fund balance, total combined fund balance of 27.6 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, expenses and changes in fund balance for the four months ending October 31st indicate that the combined revenues are at 11.2 million, total revenues are at 10.6 million, for a change in net position of 577,000, which is at 33% of the budget, which indicates that where we are, we should be at this point in time. The hydro royalties receivable were at 3.7 million on 10/31, and hydro rebates are included in the net change in position of the 700, let's see how much, 795,000. Approximately 968,000 of the $3.6 million capital outlay budget has been expended through October. The sales tax revenue for the month of October increased 105,000 over the same time last year. In November, the 2007 series, bond series debt we paid off early with an amount of $285,000. It was, the final payment was due in June. The long-term debt remaining is the municipal complex of 6.4 million, 672,000 remaining on the fire truck, and 143,000 for the purchase of the nine police vehicles. This was as of June 30th. Silas Simmons has completed their audit, and it's been submitted to the Louisiana Legislative Auditor for their review and approval. The reported fund balance as of June 30th for the general fund moved from a negative 1.467,000 to a positive 696,000, which is a $2.2 million net change. This should be sufficient for the removal of, for the move of the town from the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's distress list of towns being watched. That should happen fairly soon.
What, what, I'm sure all of you've heard, as residents, that Legislative Auditor put out a list of municipalities that might be in a distressed financial state, that actually said they might even be able to provide services. Let me assure you tonight, Vidalia is not on that list. I mean, we were on that list, but let me explain. When we got elected, we had all asked for the Legislative Auditor to come in and do a best, you know, do an audit of the town, to give us the state of our town, let us see where we were at. Of course, y'all all know it took two years to get that done, for them to give a final report and issue that report. The Vidalia General Fund, you know, we have funds that's set up, and government-wide, Vidalia, since we've been in office, has been fine government-wide as far as your fund balances. However, the general fund, the general fund went into a negative balance, I think, in 2014, is that right?
That's right.
And when we came into office, that was never a finding, or never a problem in the past, because it was never, you know, and to our knowledge, we moved funds in and out, but they never, we never brought it to a positive posture until we got the report back from the Legislative Auditor's office, and we made a transfer, and we got it in a positive posture. True enough, those municipalities, the smaller municipalities especially, that don't have an enterprise fund, like utility funds like we do, and their general funds in a negative, they probably are in problems, because they don't have anywhere to get their money other than the general fund, and taxing people, the residents, to provide their services as far as police and fire, and administration, and things of that nature. So, you know, for Vidalia to be on that list, I called the TV stations, I called the Legislative Auditor's office, I called everybody I could, and I met with the Legislative Auditor last week. I took them our newest, our newest preliminary findings from our audit from Silas Simmons, which is very, very good, and took it to them. And they said, soon as Silas Simmons submits that final audit, instead of just a draft, that they were going to do a press release, taking Vidalia off that list. And they promised us that, Deborah was on the phone, joint conversation with us, and so, don't think that we're in bad shape, we're not. Matter of fact, we've got money, we're gonna talk about a little bit later, on where to pull from to fix some things, so. But anyway, if there are any questions on that, because that's the easiest, quick explanation I got for you, we're not, we're not gonna be on any distress list, so, okay? All right. Keep doing it, Deborah?
Yeah.
Okay. Number two on our agenda is occupational license. The first one we have is Mom's Cafe, Nora Lopez Hernandez, is she here tonight? Okay. Okay, that is where, that's the, if you'll know, it used to be Sweetie's, I think, is that where it's gonna be at? Jay, is that where it is?
No.
Okay. It's gonna be a Mexican restaurant, does anybody have any questions? Also, well, we'll have to sign on, it's next, I think they did sign. Now here, motion accept?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Probst, right here, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Betts, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next we have their sign application. Is there any questions on the sign application?
Make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Doray, here a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on our list, item number four on our agenda is the board approval of the beer and liquor license for 2020. Is there any questions?
Have they all paid their?
Yes, all paid.
They, they wouldn't be on there if they hadn't submitted everything that there's...
I remember last year, we were waiting for somebody to submit something.
One was pending, I think maybe.
It was pending, but it's, they paid, yeah.
Yeah.
I move to approve.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Doray, second by Alderman Gardner, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, this next item is item number five, we discussed it at least last meeting, and today, tonight, all we have to do is get a motion and a second, there's no vote. This is after request of the bond attorney on this, and it's introduction of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $7 million of electric utility revenue bond, series 2020, for the town of Vidalia, state of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the payment thereof, confirming the sale thereof, and entering into certain other covenants and agreements in connection with the security and payment of said bonds, and providing for other matters in connection with the issuance of bonds. Now here, motion?
I've got some.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, right here, second.
Second.
Alderman McCoy, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any votes? All right. Then we come to board discussion, vote on a resolution to warrant the bid for the roadway improvements. We got the bids in, and we're gonna have our public comment on this. We have budgeted 1.1 million dollars for our road improvements, that's the, all the overlays, that's also the streets that were hurt by the seepage water, and also those that needed overlaying, that's all throughout our town, it's gonna total 1.7 million, and we budgeted 1.1. And with that, uh...
What was the number of the bid?
1.7, it's a little over 1.7 million. Blaine, Blaine cut me a match, it was one of the bids. Some of the other bids, one was 1.9, the other was over $2 million, the company that's doing the highway bid over 2 million.
It's in your package, was it?
Yes, it's in their package, and I didn't turn to it right quick, but it was 2 million, 1 million, and then 1.7.
And the estimated engineering cost was 1.5, so it was all a little higher than what we had anticipated.
Well, you don't, when they do those boards, you know, the boards, they don't know how, how much you're gonna have to get into those streets and do a better base, so that's some of the things that probably, you know, popped up, that's why they do the boards, that's one of the things we had to wait on so long, for them to be able to engineer a street that will hold up, especially if it goes through seepage water and have weight on it and so forth, so. But we, we're gonna go ahead and be in a public comments section, I don't think we have to actually go into official public meeting, but we will entertain any public comments, anybody have any questions on our streets and roads. I think they're ready to start pretty quick, I told them to hold up until, we just wanted to make sure we get our funding things right, on how we're gonna fund it, and how we're gonna move our monies around, or we pull a little extra, because we are gonna be short what we budgeted, because we budgeted 1.1, and it committed 1.7, so we're short there about 600,000, as far as budgeting. We have money, but I want to make, have the Alderman a chance to participate in which, where they want to get that money from, to pay the difference, so. And that's what we're gonna discuss a little bit, I guess, before we do a discussion and vote on accepting the bid, because we don't budget for it, we can't do it, we'd have to reject all the bids and start over, but we definitely need to fix our street, so. Is there any other, do I get any questions as far as streets?
Bud, could a part of that come, a part of the shortfall that you got, could come, some of it come as a portion of the city share of the special project fund?
Sure, sure, good. And I'm gonna show that, I mean, Jay, I'm gonna let Jay put this up on the board, and this is, this is gonna be the easiest way, I guess, to maybe... We have three funds, Ray, and that's a good question, that we can pull from. Okay, we have in our sales tax fund, if you look at the top right, the top left, I mean, we have 1.7 million dollars in our, our sales tax fund balance right now. Our industrial park fund, we have a CD that was from the denim sale, that's 1.5 million, it's in the industrial park fund, but it's in a CD for 1.5 million. And we have 1.1 million in hydro project monies, and the, the thing we don't know yet is what GOSEF and FEMA is gonna allow us, to pay us and reimburse us on fixing the streets and the sewer. So, you know, so that's one of the, that's one of the things that as we make a decision on where to get what little bit of money from, I would, my personal opinion is, we got 4.3 million plus whatever they're gonna reimburse us in, and this overlay on the street was 1.732, and the sewer came in, it's 209,000, but the sewer by Johnny Mason was not in the initial bid, so it's gonna be a, probably an additional 48,000 to fix that one, so we're saying about 250,000 there. So that total, all those repairs will be 1.981. What I would like to see us do, of course, the sales tax fund is, that's what it's for, to fix our streets and sewers and drainage, that's what it's for, but I would think that if we took maybe 1.5 out of the sales tax, this is my opinion, but whatever the council wants to do, I'm game with that. 1.5 million, 1.5 million out of the sales tax fund to pay for this, and take, you know, the balance, which if we take one and a half, that's gonna leave us 400 something thousand, maybe take 250 out of one, 250 out of the other two existing, or whatever, and, but it's whatever the council wants to do, but you can get it out of either one.
But you're saying we will, more than likely, we're gonna get those funds back?
And if we do, we can replenish Alderman Probst, if we get, whatever we get back from FEMA and GOSEF that's toward those particular things, if we, let's say if we take money, y'all decide to take 250 out of industrial park, 250 out of hydro monies, y'all can designate, well, look, whatever GOSEF pays is gonna be for just those street projects and that sewer, if they reimburse, we can put that back, whichever way y'all wanna go to first, industrial park or hydro project, whichever way y'all wanna do it, it don't matter to me. But whichever way y'all wanna put it back, if we get those reimbursements, they will designate, you know, what streets they were fixing and so forth, so we could reimburse those back into those funds.
Any timeframe possible? Do you have any idea of timeframe?
On FEMA and GOSEF?
No, I don't. I didn't think you did, I just thought I'd ask.
Do either of the first two, listed as the board, do either of those have funds in them that would be considered unspent on some project that they should have been dedicated for when they were received?
No, not, like I said, on the industrial park fund, we put, that was the leftover that we had on the, on the denim sale, and we just put that up, and put it, left it in the industrial park fund. The sales tax fund balance is always available there for us to fix any kind of street repair, any kind of sewer, any kind of drainage, and those, that's what they're designated for, the upkeep and maintenance of those particular utilities. So, again, I, from a, from a standpoint of just doing, I just, all I want us to do is have a, because we're gonna have to amend our budget, because to do this, especially with the street, that's general fund, that's not a, that's not a, that's gonna be in your general fund, you're gonna have to amend your budget, because that's gonna put you over your 5% variance that you're gonna have to amend your budget on, quite frankly, so.
Do the bids specify a completion period or time, and are they gonna all follow them to this year or '14?
I hope so, because they, and that's depending on weather, Ray, but you know, last year, we got into a period that looked like it rained every day, and also, anytime you fill with asphalt, they tell me it's gotta be a 50 degrees and ascending temperature, not, if it's going down, they can't, they can't, it don't do as well. So, I'm sure, they tell me that Blaine's ready to go, and all I wanna do is make sure that that's, everything's on the table, and as we move forward, because we gotta fix these streets, because they've been, they've been messed up too long. Anybody got a question from the public? If not, I'm fixing to move, deliver, okay.
How real money can it be, you can use it for streets, or others can use it for...
Well, I mean, any project, any project that the council wants to, that they, you know, we've had public comment on different things that the public wanted, and different projects that they would love to see, and it's gonna be up to their discretion, that's like tonight, if they elect to take 250, or 300, or 400, whatever they elect, you know, use of that fund to make up that difference, you know, it's up to them.
If that's out of sales tax, can you put hydro back in sales tax?
No, 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 no. If we, if we, if we get...
You can advertise if you don't use the hydro.
If we get reimbursed on that, and we take some monies out of hydro, my, my, my personal opinion is, let's put it, let's put it back.
I understand, but I mean, if you, if you gotta say your project, you use hydro money, you can always use the other fund for anything, right?
Yes.
But hydro, you advertise.
Well, well, you really, on any of it, it's gonna take council approval on how you're gonna spend those things anyway, unless it's budgeting.
Well, if you take, if you don't use the hydro and you use your sales tax fund, and you need some sales tax money, you can't take some hydro from there.
That's correct, that's correct.
But if you use hydro fund, you can put sales tax back in hydro, right?
No, you can't put sales tax back in hydro.
Or...
That's, the sales tax is earmarked for streets, sanitation, I mean sewage, sewage, I mean, and drainage.
About the industrial, can you put it back in hydro if you wanted to?
Uh, no. No, you can't put that back. The hydro, you know, I mean, the hydro is, it's pretty well directed, those hydro funds.
Could this be an opportunity to use it? I said industrial fund, can you put it back in hydro if you use the industrial?
No, Deborah, I'd have to, we'd have to get with Silas Simmons, see how you worked it, you'd have to do a do to and a do from, to pay back and forth, you know, that sort of thing, but...
I know, we've got things for playgrounds, and walking, and trails, and all part of that, but I think we need to treat this first, I mean, that's important. But I don't know what's that mine, you know, I don't know.
Can those GOSEF funds go back into hydro?
Yes.
See, that's what he's saying, see, you can put the GOSEF fund back into the hydro.
Yeah, that's what I want, if you go back, but I mean...
But you can't do those others.
You can make a use for city projects, right?
You can put the GOSEF fund back in any of those, you can put the GOSEF funds back in any of them.
Right, you can't any of them, but you can put it back in hydro.
Yeah, whatever, because, and I wanna clarify one thing, in the past, we were told that if you start any kind of construction, and you're asking for government money, and you start it without getting approved for it, you don't get it. Well, Deborah and I met with GOSEF and FEMA right here in the center of this office here, what, three weeks ago? Yeah, probably two or three weeks ago. But anyway, they told us, no, I said, look, we've got streets torn, we can't wait for y'all to settle and decide, hey, we're gonna give you any money, we're gonna fix our streets. They said, well, that will not hurt anything, go ahead and clean them up, and whatever you get, you can re, we'll just, you know, you're gonna reimburse them and replace your funds. Martha?
It's the sales tax, all the cars, right? We have a lot of traffic there in our neighborhood, and I mean, they're kicking on in all eight vehicles. You know, I mean, they think it's a German auto van. Some of them come down Apple Street, and they click in every bit of time, every bit, because you can't even see what kind of car.
Wait till we overlay Apple Street, Apple Street's on overlay, Martha.
I, well, I think if we did speed bumps, I'll take one of those, and I would take several of them. I think if we did speed bumps, like 20 feet from the stop sign, and then maybe 20 yards there.
Okay, let, we, that's another, I hear what you're saying, that's another discussion we need to, we, and I'll talk to you about that, because we had this discussion here a few meetings ago, about speed bumps, how especially our, our first responders field and police, you know, few and having to respond to something, and you got that fire truck, and you gotta run over and speed bump, that's a pretty devastating thing, if you're trying to get somewhere, save somebody's life, or burn an house. Honestly, I think, I feel like, you know, and, and, you know, I don't think Joey's ever turned somebody down, say, hey, little Joey, can you come set somebody down here to come watch, and put a patrol down this street for a few days or a week, write some warnings and so forth, that'll speed some people down, or make them, you know, you're not gonna stop everybody, but, you know, I'd rather address that instead of putting up speed bumps all over town, because they, they can be dangerous as well, I mean, plus in mind... Ray, didn't I talk to Jack?
Of course, you've already got, what, one point of one or two in the budget for the street overlay. So your shortfall is what, between 900,000 and millions? And since the sales tax fund is already designated inclusive of street repair and other things, why not just take it out of there, and you have fulfilled its obligation by doing so?
Well, I just didn't want to deplete that fund, because, let's say if we deplete that fund, and something comes up, you know, far as fixing a street or sewer that needs a repair, you know, because that happens all the time, if a station, lift station goes out, you don't wanna completely, you know, deplete that fund. If we have other funds available, then we have to do a quick fix.
Well, I'm thinking about 800,000.
I see your point, but the other thing I wanna do point out is our sewer, that we did put 500,000 in capital outlay for sewer repairs, and that's only gonna come in 250, so 250 of that, I want the council as well to, you know, when we amend the budget, we're gonna shift 250 of that, that we didn't use on that sewer repair, over on that, as far as just a, it's just gonna be a accounting transaction to move that over to.
So your shortfall is not, is not the full 2 million dollars there?
Oh, no, no, it's, it's, we're shorting...
And you've already designated in the budget with the 1. something million dollars.
I'm looking for about 400,000 dollars out of either industrial park fund, hydro project monies, a combination of whichever, so that's about 400 something thousand.
I'd like to split it between all.
Now, there's another place we can get is, is, I mean, we've got, revenues over expenditures now, what's down to, is around 1.8 million this year? I think in our budget, what was our budget, it was 1.1, might have been 2.1, but I'm remembering at 1.8 maybe, off the top of my head.
It's 1.7.
1.7, okay, I missed it, 100. So, you know, there's actually monies there, but, you know, the timing of that's not here yet, so, you know, at the end of the year, I don't know where we stand, you might could just go ahead and not even have to use those funds, but we need to fix these streets now, but we hadn't realized those incomes yet, so.
What do you think Bud?
Okay.
On the hydro money, what are y'all planning to do with it so far, any plans?
Well, I held often, and we had our meeting, Steve, we talked about a lot of different things, and everybody had a lot of great ideas, and that's gonna be up to the council to decide. However, I waited purposely, because I didn't know what these streets were gonna come in at, I didn't know, and I'm glad we waited, because, you know, if, you know, like I said, I think our primary purpose as a town is to provide our streets and sanitize, and do those things, the infrastructure parks, our city first, and then we'll certainly take care of the other things, and we're gonna be able to do that, I'm pretty sure.
What are some of the, can you give me a couple ideas that we're gonna use?
Pardon?
Can you give me an idea of what we're talking about using for?
Well, I'll tell you what I've got, and I'll, and tonight before you leave, we've got a copy of the things that were brought up, that people would like to see, and I'll be glad to give that to you. But I don't think that's a meeting we wanna have tonight, I think...
Oh, no.
But I'd be glad to give that list to...
These items will be used for city projects, and this is the Michael Maitland, so it's a street.
I agree. Okay, if it's not on any public comment, I'm gonna defer to the board to discuss this, move forward with this, and get going, and decide. Okay?
Here's what I saw. Special projects that was coming out of hydro fund was correct, from, that was coming from the leftovers out of hydro.
Right. The 1.1 million?
Yes, okay. So, the pumping station that we talked about, that was gonna come out of, for the special, out of the allocated funds that was used for special money in the group.
Okay. The pumping station is also in the GOSEF and FEMA money for mitigation, mitigating the floodwater.
Okay.
That's, even though we could use, if you wanna go and address it, that is also in, that's, that's not even on the table for discussion, we have turned that in...
Somewhere with it, that's what I'm saying.
Right, okay. We have turned that in to ask him to fund that as well. So, you know, if they fund it, great, but what I'm, if you, there's gonna be enough money left over, depending on what y'all do tonight, if you wanted to do that, we'll have to get, you know, somebody to draw the, do the engineering on, see what it's gonna cost to put the pumping station in. And I'm fine with that.
So I imagine my, my opinion is to take everything that we need out of sales tax, and leave hydro where it is, so we can use it for, according to the tier highest sales worth of use, that's my opinion.
Okay.
And you said you're looking for 450,000 is all we're talking about, right?
400, and what is it, 480,000?
480,000.
Yeah, nearly 500.
Which would not in any way deplete that sales tax fund, and the sales, the purpose of the sales tax fund is for street and sewage repair, correct?
Well, yeah, 1.7, that's, you're gonna be short, and I, I think you need to leave a little balance in it, whether it's 150 or 200,000. We got 1.7, the total project, the total projects are 1.98, nearly 2 million.
That was really narrow.
But you got budgeted 101, right?
Right, but...
Right, and that's where the...
Budget was from the sales tax fund.
Right. The what now?
The budgeted amount was already coming out of the sales tax.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
It was, yeah, I see what you're saying, but I thought you was, it's coming out, but you don't have the money in there yet. I mean, if they go ahead and complete this, you won't, you might not have the 1.0, the 1.9, is what I'm saying.
That's where it's coming from.
I got you. A lot of different numbers have been thrown, with a lot of different connotations, okay.
Now, if we, if we had 2 million dollars, or 2.1 million sitting in the sales tax fund, yeah, well, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. No, this is, this is strictly to get it to where if it gets completed within a month or two, we have the money to pay for it.
I'd like to see us, uh, take it from the special project fund, hydro, and then pay it back, when we get paid back.
I'd rather see it split between sales tax, industrial park.
I'm good, and I'm good with that too. You just leave the hydro.
Yes, for what, for what we said, and you potentially promised the citizens...
While we promise the people. I mean, that's a promise, but the promise is already made by the fund that's set up for that, along with the industrial park fund, that, that there was a building sold that was part of the city too, you know, so.
I'm real concerned with what Alderman Gardner's saying, as far as the pumping station too. I thought that was all inclusive in when this work that's getting ready to take place.
Which is why, I agree, we need to fix that hydro fund.
No, this, this, okay. We got, I got, there's two different things going on here, number one...
There's three actually.
Yeah, probably three. All right, we have the streets that's got to be fixed, that was done by the, by the, uh, by the damaged seepage water and so forth. We also had the, the sewer issues that were caused by the seepage water. Those were turned in to FEMA and GOSEF. They, they have came, they came out themselves, both, both parties, they went on each thing, put their hands on, measured streets, looked at sewers, took pictures, and did everything. They have all that. In addition to that, which ain't included in any of this stuff, we also went out to our, our sewer ponds and to our lift stations, because what we're having to do is where we're having seepage come into the town, the lift station at Azalea Street, where all the other lift stations pump into, that affluent line isn't big enough to take with seepage water, all the sewer coming in from there and taking it to our, our lagoons.
Got it.
It's gonna require another lift station and more, uh, more fluent lines to get it to the lagoon, and then to get it from the lagoon, we gotta get another pump, pump, make an increase of volume coming out of our ponds. Our ponds are sufficient. Ponds are good. We just don't have the, the capacity to move the water in and back out to the river. But that's, that's also in the, that's also in the presentation to FEMA and GOSEF, that that's to mitigate our issues that we had with the flooding, okay? This is, this is just issues that we've gotta fix now, streets and sewer. Now, the street project has got more streets in there than just what was affected by seepage. Apple Street, that wasn't affected by seepage water, that's affected by rainwater and wear and tear on it, uh, you know. Elm Street is, is in on that seepage water issue, because Elm Street, that, that was mush under it. Riverside, Linden, those streets, uh, Wilson Street, those were affected by seepage water. Those will be in, that we should get reimbursed.
But Apple was still part of the flood, because it stays, it, it's just flooded the area over there. No matter what you say, that, that was still part of the flood.
I can't, did we, did we, did we, Bill, who was with us when we went around with us? You went there, uh, who?
I was there.
Who? Did, did, did we look at Al, uh, Apple Street with GOSEF and FEMA?
I mean, that's, that's the.
I'd have to go back and look.
Destiny was.
I just want to point out that while the truck, the seepage water did cause tornadoes to Riverside, those trucks were ripping up the streets way, way before. And I noticed on, also on Riverside, that your flashing light that tells people how fast people are going, once I started complaining a lot about the truck speeding there, that got removed. And as I've been driving around through the school system, you see that flashing light where it tells you the speed signs, or are there any plans to put that back? Would you overlay?
It's not, it's not, it's there.
Is it still there?
Yeah.
It's removed for a little while.
It's, it's, it's down further.
It's down further?
No, it's always been, it's always been there.
It's never been moved, it's in the same place.
It's always been there.
It's there.
It's between the ramp, it's between the ramp.
It was, it was gone for a minute, so.
Bobby might know more about it, because he handles that.
The one that she was talking about is the one between Concordia Avenue and the bridge, that one got run over by a truck.
So it's not there?
Well, is it there, I mean?
Are you talking about a church? Are you talking about a church?
Destiny, you ain't lying.
Well, how many, how many was on Riverside, one or two?
It was two.
Okay.
It was a truck.
I, I found that one, when you're coming from, from Riverside, from Black Comfort Suites.
That one's still there.
Okay, that's one I was thinking.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't usually come around the other way, so I don't.
But it was a, it was a construction truck, I want to say when they were doing the work on the bridge, when they were doing the work on the bridge.
Uh-huh.
They.
Will they be replacing it, huh?
I have no idea.
Insurance wise or something?
I didn't even, I didn't even know it was, I didn't know it was happening here. Well, we need, I tell you what, tomorrow, get with me, because we need to get them to put that back up.
Well, that was, that was, that was a different pot, that was a different pot of money that had, that put around the school.
I know what I'm saying, that company replaced it. We gotta get the company replaced and put it back up. Okay, now, thank you, I, I, I thought the only one we had was one coming from the north side of Riverside headed toward the school.
Have we, are, are there any plans, because I know you're doing an overlay of Riverside, and obviously y'all know that, you know, it's hindering our right to quiet enjoyment of our property, six AM to six PM, six days a week, you can't get up, you can't go outside, eighteen wheelers, trying to sell that house, nobody wants to buy it, because it's on an eighteen wheeler route. Are there any, is the city doing anything to try and figure out a better route?
Every day.
We're talking about it every day, Destiny.
Every day.
Y'all talking about it every day, so y'all are talking about it.
We talk about it, it's coming up.
You know, you got school buses, you got disabled people, you got kids walking, you got two churches in that neighborhood, and they're going by the school zone, they're speeding, they won't cover their loads, I pick up big pieces of rock all the time, and somebody's really, I mean, I'm scared, it's not just me, someone is gonna get hurt.
We need to put one of those mannequin cop cars down there.
Okay, what?
They won't work, they just radio, they're.
I don't want to be telling you right off the point of order, y'all, what to do, where to get the money.
Yeah, let's, let's get back on, to a task with this, and that, and.
Bill, let, let us, let me have a point of order, I was just getting ready to do that. I was just getting ready to do that.
All right, let's, let's get back to our discussion up here with the council. Oh, Alderman Probst, you, what, okay, how would you, what would you want to do with it, how would you want to do it?
I'd like the same kind of situation with it, two top, sales and industrial.
So take one, all right, that's, that's going to say a part, and say one five out of the, uh, sales tax, and then take the other out of industrial park, with the understanding that when we get the FEMA and GOSEF money, we can put it back in industrial park, up to the amount that we take.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
I agree.
Alderman Gardner?
Alderman Bets, so wait a minute.
Okay.
Before you poll, let's, let's put it to a motion, we need a motion.
Well, I just seen what, if, if they're.
He was on the same page.
I just want to make sure everybody, if they have different ideas on how they'd like to see it, I'd like to hear it from you. I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, somebody might want to, you might like Roberts better than Tommy's, and you might make a motion to do Roberts, and say, "Tommy, guys want to see what everybody had," and somebody make a motion, go with it.
I'm with him, I'm, I'm with him. Is everyone ready to go ahead and get this done?
You're saying half out of each, right?
No, he just said some other thing.
Okay.
I was saying, I, I think we ought to do, one, if we're gonna do it that way, do one point five out of the sales tax and do five hundred thousand out of industrial park, if y'all don't want to flood hydro.
I make the motion. Do that.
Who's, who's saying?
I say one of.
So explain this to me, I don't get what you're saying.
What now?
I'm not the only one, right?
What now?
What did you just say? How will we go?
Okay, the total project is one point nine eighteen.
Right.
We'll take one point five from sales tax, and it would come out of there first.
Okay.
And then, the other.
It's to be split.
Would be, that would be taken out of, uh, the industrial. The four hundred and eight, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand would come out of industrial park fund, and any reimbursements we get from FEMA through GOSEF.
So nothing comes out of that?
Would be, would be put back in that industrial park fund.
Up to the.
Up to the, yeah, up to the money. Okay, motion's made, a second was made, Alderman favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Real call.
All right, do a real call.
So, that's, motion before the board.
And that's, that's because I want to hear the motion, I want to hear exactly what's supposed to be.
The motion before the board, offered by Alderman Dooray, and seconded by Alderman Gardner, is to, uh, award the bid for roadway improvements, and with the funding coming from one point five million sales tax fund, and up the remaining difference from the industrial park fund. Alderman Bets?
Yes.
Alderman Dooray?
Point of order, are we gonna put in there that it will be replaced by GOSEF funds?
Yeah.
I, I think we need to put that in there.
And also, it's not the IPF fund, it's the general fund, this money is in the general fund, not the industrial park fund. It's money that was from, transferred from.
That's, that's my writing, I put it up there, it was from, it was from industrial park, I just put it's in a CD.
It's in the CD.
The CD that's in the general.
It's in the general fund, from the sale.
So we need to put from the CD, so that means we're gonna need to write the CD.
That's right.
But you gonna be penalized for that?
Uh, I doubt Pat would do that, but I don't, I may not even have to.
Okay.
You know, depending on when this starts, we may, because I'd rather keep it.
And it is, it's a timing deal, so for sure.
Day after tomorrow, that's when it's gonna start, yeah.
So entire amount's gonna be repaid from GOSEF fund?
If.
If, if they materialize.
Any awarded from GOSEF and FEMA shall replace the funds used from whichever account used. And with that wording, I am a yea.
Alderman Dooray, yea. Alderman Gardner?
Oh.
Alderman Gardner, yea. Alderman McCoy?
Yea.
Alderman McCoy, yea. Alderman Probst?
Oh.
Alderman Probst, yea. Mail, the record show the yays are five, nays are the motion passes.
Okay, all right, item number seven, discussion of requests for proposals for cleaning of ditches throughout city limits. Uh, let me clarify that, I, I sent out RFPs, which is request for proposals on, uh, you know, the ditch that runs, uh, all the way through town, spur, all the way by, uh, down Viking Street and so forth, you know, that's grown up on Tacony, the orchard, and those ditches through there, they've got trees, there's, uh, the ditches are grown up, and, uh, I, it's sent out, because I didn't think it was gonna cost, you know, go over the bid limits, so I just had some different contractor turning bids. Uh, I've got two bids, one was from, uh, Casey, not, not Casey Novak, he had the machine that, uh, it's on the spider legs, it cleaned, if anybody's familiar with Natchez over there around their bluff, he mulches it down to nothing. Uh, that bid came in over fifty thousand. Curtis Recker put in the other, it was thirty thousand, I think one hundred and fifty dollars, uh, to clean those ditches on both sides, all the way to the levee. Uh, and I didn't know, it's, it wasn't in the budget, but with it getting winter time, I think a lot of our infestation of possums and skunks, and the whole other kind of critters is coming from those ditches and so forth, and, uh, and that's one of the reasons why I want to see if that's something y'all want to try to go ahead and, and, and get approved. That'd be another thirty thousand dollar hit to your general fund, to clean those up, but last, and then also maybe institute some kind of spraying program to keep this thing, uh, those ditches clean, because I think that's where those, all these critters are coming from, those areas, and, and going into those neighborhoods at night, and going back in that ditch during the day, or under sheds and so forth, so.
I'd like to see us do that.
Is that specific to just what you described there, I mean, are there other drainage areas within the city?
Have you actually, basically, got a list of what that is?
The scope of this one, right, is really that, that main ditch, it goes along that railroad spur, crosses the highway, goes on behind Viking Street, it does not include the one that goes behind, uh.
Herb Georgetown.
No, Tacony, no, it's, it's Tacony.
You still get that one?
Now, it don't go, it doesn't, it don't go west on Tacony back up in there, it's strictly that ditch there, that goes by the old trestle, all the way down behind.
That side.
Yeah, on both sides of, both sides of that, now, that includes both sides, because both sides are grown up pretty bad. But, uh, now, as far as the, the rest of the ditch from, from Carter Street, you know, the drainage ditch from the old trestle, back behind the orchard along Peach Street, and back through, uh, the Clayton property, that, that ditch is not included in it.
Well, the reason I ask that is, there is one ditch, or two ditches, that nothing has really happened in terms of maintaining the drainage to the canals, and that's on Concordia Extension, which I realize is not within the city limit, but the roadway is a requirement, as I understand it, that the city maintains that roadway, which includes the ditches. So I, I'm, I'm suggesting maybe, maybe someone ought to consider in the future, uh, keeping those ditches.
I think we keep those cut, I think now, I think the questions come up with that fence row on the, uh, on the right, if you're going, I think, but the, the town's not responsible to keep that, that, that fence row.
Yeah, all we'll take is a scoop, a scoop, uh, the full length on both sides of, of Concordia Extension, you know, there's some low areas and the high areas.
It, it bobbed next right there.
And even when it's not raining, it'll hold water.
Taking our fix.
And it does have a, a kind of a signature in certain puddled areas there, and, and it, it hadn't been maintained either by the parish or the town.
I know that we, we cut it, we, we cut those ditches, if you can, because we.
Well, cutting is one, drainage is another.
Huh?
Cutting is one thing, but drainage is another. I'm just talking about scooping it, keeping it cleaned out and, and on a, on a sort of drain towards Murray Drive and towards the canal.
Okay.
And eventually all covered up, we'll get back to it in action.
Um, okay, Ray, we're kinda getting in, I really think that's police jury's responsibility, because each side of that is actually out of the city limits. We maintain, by I say maintain, we, we'll keep the grass cut, but as far as keeping those ditches graded, and I, I think that should be on the parish there.
Well, and, and that's, they say it's the town, and of course, as I understand, I may be wrong with yours probably no more, but the roadway was dedicated, the roadway was dedicated, and the town will take care of it. Uh, and, and the, the two ditches are a part of that roadway.
Lee, what is your recollection of that?
Uh, we've always maintained the road, and we've kept the, the ditches cut, but as far as I know, the parish is.
You'll keep those covers clean on it, too, don't you?
No, not on that road.
Those, those, clean, I just wanted to have it cleaned out.
When Pam had, Ray, when Pam had the issue, Ray, when Pam had the issue with the cover right there at the drainage ditch, where she crossed over, parish came in and fixed, they didn't want to put in all that.
Mm-hmm.
The parish did, I mean, so, they're, really, the parish is responsible for this, those.
Maintain the road and keep the ditches good.
Can I suggest that maybe someone with the city administration talk to someone in the parish and work it out, who will take care of it?
That, we have police jury members that should be representing us, and that we voted for, and we need to talk to those guys to, instead of us. I mean, I'd be glad to, but you have as much say in that police jury meeting, you, you elect police jury members that represent you as well, so.
Uh, well, of course, certainly you've got some engineered drawings, and when that, when that, uh, transaction was made to dedicate this property, uh, for the town.
We do, and I, and I pull it out and look at it. Destiny, what you, what you?
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions, but I also, I do want to point out that we've noticed there's one particular black property on Carter Street that's gotten extension, so we're really happy about that, so thanks for the city for any involvement that y'all have in that.
That was a, that was a black property, Bill, Bill and them worked very hard on that. Uh, one of the things.
You know, y'all have, um, but I, the other questions that I have, uh, I just want to remind you, and the police jury, if you're spraying anything, herbicides, pesticides, whatever it is, it's used with areas now, and remember that takes your buttons into a protected waterway, so you have to be really careful with that, and you also, you know, just do a little research on how herbicides and pesticides are affecting, because we don't want to do anything to increase our cancer risks here in our parish, because right now our cancer is pretty low as compared to other places in Louisiana. And, uh, two more questions, what do you recommend if people are having to do, like if they're having scum problems? I mean, I take care of my own, but I know they used to trap them, and the dog catcher would come get those years ago.
We have, we have scum.
I don't know, do y'all still do that?
We have scum traps that we bought, and, uh, that's handled through the animal control, that would be under chief, so.
And then the last question that I have is, uh, and this may not have anything to do with y'all, I'm not really sure, uh, when LDOT just repaved the bridge, of course, they extended the road a little bit, and they cut out a lot of that grass, like right there where it kind of meets, you know, where it comes around the corner to Linden. So I'm a little concerned, because Linden always gets a lot of water when it rains, like our whole water, my whole street will be under water. So I'm a little concerned about how that will affect water coming off of the bridge on the Linden, or if there's any plans to address that by LDOT or the city.
I'll have to, that's gonna be, that's mainly the LDOT, then we have to look at that, but we, we completely went from this, I, I'll be glad to talk, I'll be glad, because we, we started talking about. I'll be glad, because we, we started talking about.
I think you're so involved at those questions.
I'll be glad, I'll be glad to visit y'all today tomorrow, and we'll go around there. Our next rain is supposed to rain, oh.
Not in that week. I can address one of our issues on Linden. We, we hydroblasted and one of the cover is coming off of Linden, so you should be good to y'all.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd like to see us go ahead and address the issue, and, you know, if that means adding thirty-one thousand to the budget, when we have to do a budget amendment anyway, I'd like to see us go ahead and do that.
Okay.
And go ahead and award it to Curtis, who came in the lowest.
Okay. Anybody else got any questions on it? Are y'all, do y'all want to put a motion to accept that? Make a motion, we do that. Motion made here, second?
I second it.
Second made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Okay, update on the sewage project. We've talked about the sewer, it came in at two hundred something thousand. At the, after we get through item number nine on our agenda, what we didn't do, we didn't actually award, and that's my fault. I had the sewage project on here, but I didn't explain it that we needed to accept the bid, and they're getting ready to start. And so after this, I'm going to be asking if we can add an agenda item to accept the bid on the sewage project that we thought was going to cost five hundred, it came in at two oh nine. But anyway, that's where we're at. They're going to start in two, just a couple of days to get these things knocked out, weather permitting, so. That old ugly pipe at Johnny May's will be gone, and we'll have these other things fixed. McCohey, Lane will be fixed, and also Jefferson Street has an issue. And so, but those are also things that are flood related, that we will be getting monies back on, so just keep that in mind. So that's where we have the sewer project, we'll talk about it hopefully again here in just a few minutes. Go to item number nine is board approval of the replacement hire for the day, Police Department, Susanna Page Welch as a full-time administrative secretary.
You got any further comment with the comment?
Sure, I mean, that's over, I mean, anybody?
I noticed that was on the agenda, and I looked back over a full year, two thousand nineteen, and, and I see it's been on the agenda. As a matter of fact, in two thousand nineteen, we had six full-time employees and three part-time employees on the agenda for the police department. In the last six months alone, accounting this month, we've had five full-time, five of those six, and two part-time. And, you know, out of concern that, that somehow we're getting too much turnover for some reason or the other, I mean, why are we replacing, why aren't we having to consider it again, having considered it in months before? A different position conversation, and, and my comment has nothing to do with people being put in and so on, but there was a discussion several times in the past few years of ways to find, to cut costs in all departments. And attrition is a very good way of doing it without hurting any, anybody's feelings enough. And I just wondered why it didn't consider attrition on particularly this many of them in this short period of time.
Okay.
Let me, as far as a point of order, the mayor's asking that we have another item added to the agenda. I saw move that we.
We're going to do this.
No, because this needs to go to executive session, and that's, that's, that's my other point. If we're talking about a personnel matter, we don't need to do it in open session. After we get to public comment, we need to go in executive session and discuss this.
Counsel, I'm going to defer to you. I think, I think to go into executive session, I think it's, I do see one of the persons that was hired here tonight, but I think there has to be some notices done if you're going to go into executive session to discuss those things, I think. I don't want to violate that open meeting law. I think the Larson Act calls for any higher disciplinary action taken or firing of anybody employed out of, out of the police department, has to be approved by the mayor and the council. Now, I didn't say it has to be, that you have to have executive session or whatever. I think there are certain requirements you got to hit, and I think one of those is to talk about the competency and, and things of that nature. You know, I don't know if that shouldn't be deliberated in opens, open meeting.
My thoughts on this, what, what he's talking about is a police department matter.
Right.
And, and the board really doesn't control the police department as such, you know, elected office.
Why is it on the agenda for us to hear?
Because it does state he has to come before the board on the hire.
You have to approve of hires.
But we can't control his personnel.
Okay.
But, but what he's talking about is not the approval of this hire and fire, this is a specific item.
Right.
He's talking about his perceived.
Are we not talking about?
Concern over not using attrition as a way to cut cost, et cetera.
I'm, I'm understanding what Ray's talking about, but are we not talking about hiring a person here?
But, but again, it wasn't executive session, I mean, we didn't do it for the others. I mean, we, we hired somebody the other day without executive session.
The chief, the chief wants to hire somebody, if you don't want to let him do it, you've got that.
The chief asked me, why does his, why would his stuff come up, his people, why do they come up on the agenda?
Because it's law.
Okay.
It's mostly a discussion.
Okay.
And I'm supposed to recommend it because the mayor, the mayor puts it on, on the agenda and y'all vote.
Well, that's, if I may, that's one of the things that I'm actually having an issue. I, I actually would like to go into executive session as well, because it's my understanding that this is not a recommendation, this is an approval. She's already been hired and is currently working, is that correct?
I mean, since we're talking about it, I'll go ahead and explain it.
Yeah.
We are attritioning, we, we thirty-two, thirty-three people, Diana, we actually spilled down another person.
Right.
I can't help when somebody gets another job, a better job, or what have you, and goes to another department or some other place, I can't help that. With the raises that we had in the past, you know, in the past years, other departments is getting caught up with us. We started out, we were, we were making more considerably than other departments. Now we're eleven now, but we have been saving money, we have been doing this. We've been putting more jobs on other ditches.
About twenty-four hours.
This move right here is actually going to save us about seven dollars an hour compared to what we was making. So it is saving money, but when I hire somebody, it's pending board approval. I can, I can hire and I can fire pending y'all's approval. And I talked to pretty much every one of y'all about this before I did it, because she had to quit another job to take this, and I had to do it quickly because I was only gave pretty much a week notice on this transition, so had to act quickly, and I got ahold of each one of y'all, and I was y'all, even the mayor and everybody. And it was, everybody approved it at the beginning, I don't understand it.
I, I wasn't one of the y'all that you talked to. I don't know who you talked to, but you didn't talk to me about it, I didn't know.
Thought I talked to you on, on the back of the police department, but.
No.
Just, I mean, I'm sorry if I did, I saw I missed one of y'all, but I, you know, the rest of y'all I did.
Now, you did, you did talk to me about it, and you sent assistant chief to my office to talk to me about it again, but it was more of an informative, this is what I've done. And as I.
I've done it at that point.
He said you were rushed.
She was in there training.
I, I was rushed.
Who rushed you?
The person that, that swayed. I mean, I only had two weeks to, to hire somebody, and that's, that's a very important position, you know, she, she does all of her payroll and time card and stuff like that, and I mean, I've, I've attritioned enough. Like I said, I'm down thirty-three people from when I took office, it was fifty-nine, you know, something like that, so I'm, I'm down considerably amount, so attrition is, I've done that.
But you had someone in that.
And it is in my budget, by the way. First hour will be in my budget, actually lower than, than what it is. It is a position that y'all voted on, that I can have, the money is in there. Basically, all, I have somebody quit, I'm replacing it. I really don't see the issue.
When you talked about saving seven dollars an hour, does that take into consideration benefits as well?
Yes, the, the one that, that left has benefits.
And the new hire does not?
She does.
Okay, is it the same plan?
I, I, I don't know that part.
I believe this is really the person.
And that would get them the more personal issues.
That's exactly why I'm trying to go to executive session.
But whatever it is, I'm budgeting for it, the money is in the budget. Y'all approved my budget for all this position.
Yep.
And it's just going to come in lower than what y'all approved, regardless of the, the plan.
So let me, let me tell you my thought process on that part of it. Month after month, I hear you say, I need more patrolmen, I don't have enough patrolmen, I need more patrolmen. I always thought this would have been a great opportunity to hire another patrolman, which is something that you say constantly that you need. Now, you have someone, you had someone in that position, I know that you did some shifting in the office. I think that, like I said, this would have been a great opportunity to hit what you've been seeking since the beginning, which was more patrolmen. And I talked to the person that left, and I asked about the workload. You know, would the workload that she left constitute a full-time position for one person so that another one would have to be hired? And the answer received was no, because a lot of the things that were being done were split up between other members in.
We didn't talk to the secretary, we talked to the one that left.
I did.
Her job.
Mm-hmm.
But, but what I'm saying is with this seven dollars an hour, and I'm already another officer short already, I'd like to leave a little leeway. This would actually give me enough room to hire another person, but I'm not, I'm not in the, I'm not trying to hire another person besides her right now. We're, we're doing just fine. We could always, I mean, we had two bridges complaining in the night about speed, we can't see everywhere at once. I mean, always, that's always of, of any police chief, sheriff, whatever, it's going always.
It was a hundred, wasn't it a hundred, a little over a hundred, a hundred fourteen thousand?
No. That overtime? No, it was, it was compensated for overtime.
That was a hundred and fourteen thousand.
About a hundred and fourteen thousand, about right.
A hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fourteen, a hundred, a hundred and some thousand dollars.
I, I've been staying, I've been. Again, it's.
I've got one question I want to ask Joey. On this, on this hire, are you going to try to post-certify this person?
That, that's what we're saying, like, the secretary before was post-certified.
Right.
We moved her to a position to where she had to be post-certified, and I hired somebody that didn't. So we, now we have a player left.
Okay.
So I mean.
So you won't try to do that with her?
No, she's a secretary.
Okay.
You know, she's not going to be carrying a gun or something like that, she's not going to be driving a police car. She's a secretary, she's going to do the secretary duty.
Well, that, that post pay comes from the state, it doesn't, it doesn't come from ours.
I mean, I'm not getting that.
Being post-certified, just, you just have to be under the umbrella of a police department or sheriff's department to get that.
Yeah, but I started my post-certified offer a lot before, so I started hurt off Just for having that qualification already, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
If you post-certify and you come to work, you make this amount. If you not, you make this amount. Plus, if you post-certify, you get the extra pay. But, you know, she, she's not post-certified, she's only a secretary.
And she's going to stay a secretary, correct? That's what your plan is?
That's her job. She, I mean, she's not, and that's why she's going to stay, so.
And her job duties as a secretary would be what?
All of the bookkeeping, the payroll, the answering phone, just, you know, keeping up with all the daddy duties within the department.
And that's what a police department secretary does? Takes care of the payroll.
That's time cards. We do payroll, time cards is what y'all basically do. No, we do the payroll over here, we handle all those things.
And I think.
Because this is payroll, you take a whole lot more responsibility.
It's a lot of bookkeeping and paperwork involved in a police department.
And I think that we see with, with a lot of the paperwork issues or whatever that was going on, that whoever your secretary would be would communicate a little bit more with Jay, so he would have some documents needed that he would need.
She's been working on it already, actually.
I, I will say this, I, I think, I know, I know Paige, she's a, she's a delightful person, and I, I support it, I support the move, I, I do know that you got to have some money there, and I believe that she's going to do a good job. And, you know.
This has, this has absolutely nothing to do with her as an individual.
I'm just saying that I, I'm for, if, if I know who she was, I'm for her as an individual.
But approvals, they, they come before the hire, right?
That's where there's, there's the gray area we've all talked about, you know, where it comes from. It just says, it doesn't say the timing of it, because.
Well, we ought to talk about the purpose of it then. What's the purpose of having an approval if, has she, she's already been working, right?
Correct.
How long has you been working?
One week. I mean, I guess we could have had a special meeting.
We had one last week.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, I, I went to each one of y'all except for Tron, and I thought I'd go to him and talk to him, and just supposed to then, you know, let you know that nobody had a problem with them until we get to the meeting. It's in my budget. All I did was replace another person. She's, she's well-trained, she comes from Silas Simmons, I mean, she's, she probably worked way more than what I paid her.
No, no question that she's going to do your bookkeeping and all that, that's worked way more than you, you paying her. Actually, that's pretty, pretty close to an insult, asking her to do that at seven dollars an hour.
That's it.
I heard him say.
Saving seven, he's saving seven.
Well, I'm hearing different stuff.
I thought you was kidding. No, I wasn't kidding. Either, either, either we, we're going, either, we're going to prove it, approve people before they go to work? And the conversations outside, and feeling as if they've talked to everybody prior to the meeting, you know, but, and again, I don't want to hurt the, I don't want to hurt the young lady. I don't want to hurt the young lady.
Can I tell you the danger in that though? And, and you got a good point. Who do you know the danger is? If she's had a job, and we bring her publicly and put her out here that she's wanting to leave that job before she's accepted, she may jeopardize her current job, even if she doesn't get this one. You see what I'm saying? You can't.
He's already had us do that today. If this is not approved today, she's left without a job.
Well, I, I agree, but what I'm saying is, but it's, that's why the gray area, Alderman Coey, and you're exactly right, is that gray area is, again though, but if she would have, if, if Joey would have presented her in a special meeting, whatever, publicly and, and named her name and put her out there in that position, there's going to be somebody pick up on that call where she's working, say, hey, look, so-and-so's trying to get on with, with them, you know, that, that, I think that creates a disservice to anybody that you're trying to get an employee with.
And I think the process needs to be where we find a way where we can go in executive session and discuss, discuss those, these very issues, so we, it wouldn't jeopardize anything. Would we have to name them all? We have to name them all?
No.
I'd rather the position, if the position had just been there versus the name.
The thing is, if it's a necessary, and Joey, you were right, in my opinion, if it's that necessary, then call for that special meeting. I mean, that's what we're here to do, if we, if we can make it, we can make it, if we can, if there's a situation, but if everybody can be there, we can be there. But go ahead and make the special meeting request and then go from there. And again, I'm with the position rather than the person.
I'm not talking to you individually, you know.
Yeah.
For the matter of, I didn't know if it was any question, if, if y'all was against it, I wish y'all would have told me then.
Right.
Then we could have had some kind of meeting. But everybody I talked to was against.
But, but see, the thing is, you didn't talk to everybody according to Tron, which that's the thing, and, and that's why it covers it one way, and that way everybody gets disseminated information to get, to have that special meeting, and you don't leave anybody out. And it's, it's just a matter of, and I, I agree with the fact of not the person, but the position. I think that's what we're looking at.
If you, if you're going to go into special executive session, whoever that person is you're deliberating on has to have the opportunity to be there and have their representation.
Twenty-four hours notice.
Twenty-four hour notice.
And we did, I'll say this, Alderman, this was brought up in this last seminar, went to clerk seminar. You get, that very question was brought up, it, due to the nature of public meetings, it does, they have to be named.
They do have to be named, and that's, that's what I was wondering.
When elected police chiefs decide they can, it can be retroactive, you know, it's typical that it might come before, but they, that's happened with us too, but.
Right.
It does, they do have to be named in the position, but, but as far as executive session, that person does have to be given twenty-four hours written notice, and they can choose to go in the executive session, or they can choose to have it in an open session.
Well, the main thing that I'm, that I'm seeing is, I can understand a big meeting or whatever, if I was creating a position or adding more to my budget, but what, what y'all have already approved is the budget I have. Y'all have already approved that. I've already approved the position that she has, because I have somebody there. Everything's approved, I will approve it, it's hard to go to work. Everything else is already approved. And, and me, being elected chief, I have the authority to hire somebody pending y'all's approval, and then basically y'all have already approved, because y'all have already approved my budget, y'all have already approved the position. Everything approved but her.
The Larson Act actually states that you are, you make a recommendation.
Yeah.
You make a recommendation.
But it's pending y'all's approval.
That, that's right, you make a recommendation, and a recommendation is prior to, prior to the event of hiring. When you called me, I didn't speak for what you did with anybody else, it was this. did with anybody else, it was, this is what I've done, she's already given her two weeks, I've got her in here training, so-and-so's going to be gone. No, you did, and that's, that's the issue that I have.
When did I call you?
When did you call me, I'll have to go and pull my phone off.
Cause Paige didn't start till.
Last Monday, I was, before I started, Paige just said yes, he got pre-approved from you, you and you.
He didn't get my approval, that would have been cold one, no ma'am, he did not get my pre, I told you he did.
I didn't, I didn't get your disapproval.
Yeah, you informed me of a situation that was upcoming, and this is exactly what I'm talking about.
So I wasn't in it.
See, this is exactly what I'm talking about, you put her in very bad situation.
Can I ask one question, if this elected as police chief won't hire somebody, why would y'all, why would you not want him, if he wants him, why should you be giving anybody?
It has, it has nothing to do with being against it, it's the process, it's the process.
I understand that.
And, and listen, and let me be the first to say this, I just, I see her, and I notice him going, you know, doing this, so I see her, and I'm not heartless enough to say no now, considering, considering that all the dynamics going on in the room with a young lady sitting here crying about a job that she's been promised by him depending on somebody else's approval, and sounds like he missed a couple, two or three people, and thought he had enough to get it done. I assume move that whatever the recommendation is by the elected chief of police, as far as this young lady is concerned, that we accept.
I second that.
Motion made by Alderman McCoy, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And I do as well. Okay.
Make some good jobs.
All right, I also, I also ask that we add an, add an item to the agenda, which would require unanimous, unanimous vote, so we can deal with, what issue?
We have to have a unanimous vote from the council to accept the bids that were opened on October seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, for the wastewater collection system improvements on Jefferson Street, McCoy Lane, and those other areas that's during that, so I'll bid.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Alderman McCoy, second by Alderman Betts, this does require a hundred percent, and so if you want to do a call, clerk.
On the motion to add the agenda item discussed, Alderman Betts.
Yes.
Alderman Betts, yea, Alderman Dorey.
Yea.
Alderman Dorey, yea, Alderman Gardner.
Oh, yea.
Alderman Gardner, yea, Alderman McCoy.
Yes.
Alderman McCoy, yea, Alderman Fokes.
Yes.
Alderman Fokes, yea, mayor of the record show, the motion passes, you have it.
Okay, on that, the only thing we're doing, y'all, is accepting this bid, Mitchell Contracton was the low bidder at two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars.
I second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorey, second by Alderman McCoy, all in favor, say aye? Go ahead, motion we adjourn.
Say it.
It's unanimous, adjourn.